My daughter wants, she's had the same. It's supposed to be cool, she has some cool ideas, but it's her.
It's the easy thing to do.
Hey. All right. Thank you, so now my headaches begin. Talk to you later.
I am now called to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November 15, 2016 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terrapany.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seabrook is absent and excused. Commissioner Slattery.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Kurt Scher of St. Timothy's. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
The Lord be with you. Gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this city that you've given us to care for. Protect us, help us to prosper, help us to be good stewards of all that you have given us. Give wisdom to our leaders that they might guide us in the ways that we should go that bring you glory. We ask your blessing tonight upon us in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. We are now going to the public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight. If you have any comments, please come forward. State your name and your address for the record, you'll be given four minutes.
Good evening. Anita Protas, 901 Bay Shore Drive. A few weeks ago, there was an article in the newspaper about communities south of us who went after BP funds. Here are some of the questions I have for my city government. Why did we not file for BP funding? We are a sponging, fishing, shrimping community, plus a waterfront tourist destination. We also have two beautiful beaches on the Gulf. Was the, I'd like to know, was the issue brought before the commission and was there a vote taken by the board to not pursue the funding which was available? Or was a consensus taken never before the board? If this was the way it was decided, it's wrong. The issue should have been on an agenda item where a discussion could have been at a commission meeting and citizens could have had an input. What was the analysis to not pursue funding? And whose analysis was it? We well qualified, being mayor a few, many few years ago, I still have friends down in the counties and communities south of us. Safety Harbor, Dunedin, Clearwater, the beaches further down got funding, not Tarpon Springs. I have talked to many individuals, and some of the comments have been, why didn't Tarpon go after money? They would have gotten a lot. Had we gone after funding, we would have received quite a bit of money, I have heard from some attorneys who had worked on the BP funding. And we would have at least had the money to do the dredging, I believe, of the Anclot. We would have won big in Tarpon Springs. I know there are businesses here in town that went after funding on their own and they received quite a bit of money, and good for them. I am disheartened that we didn't go after this money, which could have easily been ours, when they even came to doctors' offices and lawyers' offices in Florida saying, "Come after BP funding because you are on the water and it's available." That's a fact, and you can't dispute it. We lost out big time. Also, for the fourth time, and again, no answer, I've come before this board about election codes. I believe, as was in the newspaper, Safety Harbor, Clearwater, Osmar, St. Pete, plus smaller communities south of us down on the beaches, have worked with a Mr. Bill, I believe his name, to our attorney is Mr. Bryanston, from Jacksonville. Yes, it makes a fee, but he works with communities of all different sizes to have good election rules and regulations. And the reason I'm asking this, I don't ever want to see Tarpon Springs trashed, and I say trashed, with campaign signs as we did with the last election at Christmas time and Epiphany. I don't want to see our community trashed with other outside elections at the same time coming and putting signs everywhere on fences, on buildings, and they would have to be taken down. The rules and regulations for a better election would also help our clerks' office, excuse me, and all of those who are running for election. I spoke to Mr. Trask, and I'm speaking to our attorney also tonight. It can be done. And this gentleman out of Jacksonville is an expert in this, according to some attorneys, and he could do a lot of good service at Tarpon Springs to help us, so we never again go through what we went the last time. I'm asking the city to at least look into it. We need to do something with our election codes and rules and regulations so that we can keep our community in order and run a very professional, fine campaign at election time. These are the two issues I bring before you. I will not come back with the codes, this is the fourth time. If you want to ignore it, you can, but it'll fall back on you and bite you in the back in coming elections. I can guarantee that. And for the BP money, it was a great, it's bad that we just didn't even follow through because of the community we have and the history of our community on the waterfront. We lost out, board members, big time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Evening. Speaking of elections, I want to thank the citizens of Florida for voting down Amendment 1, and I will hope that those people who did so will involve themselves and reach out to their local delegations, their representatives in the state and in the federal government to continue to push for efforts to truly make Florida the sunshine state. I also would like to say that this election season was interesting for many aspects. And as many people, I was kind of shocked by the outcome, but not surprised, not surprised. If you look at the map of the U.S. and see who took which states, there's a huge amount of America that does feel left out. And to me, so much of that is corporatization, corporatization. And we're past the point of not being global because we all depend on each other in this world. But I just want to say at this point that we do have a great country. Our systems are strong. We allow people to speak their mind, yet we accept what the vote of the populace has brought us. This is the second time in my lifetime, and then probably for many of you, that a president has been elected by an electoral college and not by the popular vote, Gore and now Hillary. So I'm not going to get into that issue, but the point is, is our system is set up, we follow that process, and we all need to work for the common good of America. Now, I respect the right of people to protest, but I also have a beef because in looking at results, approximately 45 to 47% of the eligible voters did not vote. And yet, I would bet that a majority of the people out there protesting and being out there are those who didn't. And secondly, they should, as I've heard a few wise people speak, just calm down, let things happen, and then when an issue comes up that you specifically have, whether it's Planned Parenthood, whether it's the Clean Water Act and letting the Dakota Pipeline go through, whether it's loosening up regulations for fracking, whatever your issue may be, immigration, health insurance, if that's your issue, then put your focus on that. But I would have to say that I'm proud that we do have a country that we will move forward, and I think with most of us in the real world being somewhat reasonable, we can find ways to bridge our gaps and work together. And I just have to say, God bless America, and I'm glad I live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delakis. Any other comments? Our city manager wants to explain the reason why the BP funds was not, we didn't apply for.
Well, I explained both of them, and it's funny, and I know the mayor told me I was going to be madder, but I'm not mad at you, I know where this comes from. So I'll just answer it again. This probably, those of you who have computers and Google, there is a lot written about this. When it first happened, in fact, we had a major story from one of those Forbes magazines, major magazine in New York, talking about the integrity of the City of Tarpon Springs for not going after the money they weren't due. Big articles locally, you'll see articles when you Google about some of these lawyers who are making 30 and 40 and 50%, whatever they're making off cities and putting together their numbers, you'll see they criticized this. All that's been well documented. And then about a year, year and a half ago, somehow the issue came up again, and is well documented again. It's a very simple fact. They gave criteria for that money, and myself, in fact, I'm the only one that's still here from the time evaluated, it was myself, Eric Walker's Finance Director, and Jim Yackoff is the attorney. We went through all of those criterias, and it's a very simple matter of we did not qualify for the qualifications. And we didn't qualify, and in fact, in the newspaper that quoted us, they quoted me as saying that we were encouraging BP to go into our community and get the people on the waterfront and give the money to the people on our Tarpon waterfront that truly need it, and not all the people that they were giving it to that really didn't qualify and got it. And that was our integrity and stuff. Criterias were easy, we didn't have those criterias others have. We didn't do it, it was looked at, we were praised nationally, it came back later and they questioned us. It wasn't there. Some cities did, and some cities, and people in the cities who hire these lawyers, they would tell you, probably behind the scenes, I wouldn't reveal who they were because of that, that they knew within the city that they didn't qualify because they gave it to the lawyers, and lawyers presented the numbers and they got money. That was okay to them. Integrity is something important in this city, and we upheld it, and that's why we didn't get the money. On the second point, I can answer that too, because the city attorney and I have been discussing about our sign ordinance and all the different things, and I do have money set aside that possibly, we've been talking about it, the progress, maybe even updated stuff of getting that attorney from Jacksonville. It's in the process of trying to get him, get a prize from him, and not only look at that, but we've got a lot of elements of our sign code and stuff to look at, and he is, you are right, he is the best in the state in asking around and looking, and the city attorney is in the process of contacting him, getting together, and that is in the process and working for you.
Thank you, Mr. Delacour. We are now going to the proclamations, item number 1A. Vice Mayor Terrapany will read the proclamation of Farm City Week.
City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas Florida farmers and ranchers help feed the world by producing a bounty of nutritious foods. To do this, they rely on essential partnerships with urban and suburban communities to supply, sell, and deliver finished products to consumers across Florida and around the globe. And whereas during National Farm City Week, we recognize the importance of this cooperative network. Agriculture employs more than 2 million workers, including farmers and ranchers, shippers, processors, marketers, retailers, inspectors, and others who contribute an annual impact of $148 billion to the Florida economy. And whereas Farm City Week activities celebrate mutually beneficial relationships that support the quality of life we all enjoy. Next week, as we gather with family and friends around the Thanksgiving table, we count these relationships among our many blessings. And whereas we commend the many Floridians who work hard and ingenuity provide us with food abundance and reflect the true spirit of our state and nation, now therefore I, Vice Mayor Townsend Terrapany, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, to hereby proclaim November 16 through the 23rd, 2016 as Farm City Week. In the City of Tarpon Springs, I encourage all citizens to acknowledge and celebrate the achievements of all those who work, who, working together, produce and supply our community, our nation, and the world with an abundance of agricultural products.
Proclamation will be mailed.
Yep, it'll be mailed.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, any commission comments? No. We are now going to the item number 1B, Walk Life Med and Dash Day. City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, proclamation, whereas on Saturday, November 19, 2016, Med Mothers Against Drunk Driving of the West Coast Thora and host the Pinellas Walk Life Med at Largo Central Park. And whereas funds raised will be used to continue Med Pinellas's community education, victim support services, and youth programs that work to eliminate underage drinking. And whereas, the mayor and the seat of Tarpon Springs remind the citizens of Tarpon Springs that, unlike many other causes, drunk driving does not need a cure. The cure is awareness and education so that each one of us choose to drive sober or designate a driver. And now therefore, I, Chris Alahuzis, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, to hereby proclaim November 19, 2016, as Walk Life Med and Dash Day. In the City of Tarpon Springs, and do encourage all the citizens to participate in this very important event, and further urge all the citizens to make responsible decisions and take appropriate measures to prevent impaired driving. That proclamation also is going to be mailed. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, any commission comment? Thank you. We are now going to the presentations, item number 2, Economic Impact Study by PMG Associates Incorporated.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners Karen Lemmons, Economic Development Manager, and I'm pleased to introduce the Economic Impact Study that was prepared by PMG Associates, and Phil and Kathy Ginnon are here tonight. As you know, we commissioned this study in order to assess the overall economic impact of the marine commerce and tourism industries, as we have been working on the Anclot River Dredge Project and knowing that we needed to have some hard data as we were going out to secure funding for the project from the county and state levels. So the study was commissioned, it assesses both the marine commerce and the tourism areas. So in addition to being able to use this information for the dredge project, we're also, contains a lot of useful data that we can use for our overall economic development efforts. Things like our north Anclot River planning area, attracting new businesses, especially in the marine commerce area, and obviously our hotel attraction efforts. We finally have some tourism data that is specific to the city and not just Pinellas County. So to that end, I'd like to thank the Marine Commerce Committee. This report was presented to them at their meeting earlier this month. I see Joan here, and Chairman Cloneras is here. They were very thoughtful in looking at the study. I also want to thank all the businesses in the city that participated, either online, written surveys, telephone surveys, and face-to-face interviews. And we have a very good response rate from our businesses, and as obviously it benefits them, but I want to thank all of the businesses that participated in the study as well. So with that, Phil will go through the study for you, and I'd like to introduce Phil Ginnon.
Good evening. My name is Phil Ginnon with PMG Associates. The study, the purpose of it, I think as Karen had mentioned, was to measure the economic impact of the marine commerce and tourism industries. And obviously, the reason they're combined in this study is they're so intertwined in this particular community. But if you see through the report, we provided numbers for them individually because there are competing interests there, so we didn't want to mix them, so we made sure that we completed something that was able to generate it for everyone. Our methodology was basically a calculation based on what we call direct empirical data. There are a number of different sources of different information. There's sales tax data, there's other different sources, but one of the things we like to do is go directly to the businesses themselves. We want to make sure that we were able to collect them, the information for how they operated their individual business. And we guaranteed their anonymity in this because we're not here publishing the financial records of any of your business, but they were all done in aggregate, as you can see in the report. So what we did is several different ways. We contacted all of the businesses within that marine commerce, tourism-related type of activity in a community. We also wanted to make sure we talked to, directly to tourists, because that was a big expenditure. We met people on the streets, asked them about their purpose, their motivations for being in town, what they were doing here, what was brought them here, and how much, importantly, they were spending. And we looked through those particular analyses to make sure we were able to break down everything into all its finest details. We actually were able to contact initially over 160 businesses directly, covering the full gamut from food, restaurants, retail, the marine industries, and including the hotel motel and commercial real estate, because they're all involved in this particular analysis. We contacted them directly, followed it up for those that didn't respond immediately. We did have some other sources, but we made sure that we covered everything as best as we could. And you see, this map here just gives you the idea where the concentration of those businesses are in the city. The surveys, again, there was the business survey, which was directly related to each of those individual operators of those 160 enterprises. There was one at hotels, people in the morning and breakfast, talking to them of why they're there at the hotels. The General's Tourist Survey, we met people, what's called a direct intercept, on the streets, there at the docks, and also the weekend we did, it was the first Friday, so we did meet some people in the downtown area. And then we supplemented by outside sources. Hoover's is one that gives commercial data for businesses. We went through the State Department of Revenue data, and Nielsen, which is better known as Claritas, which gives a breakdown of activity in any particular area. Now, for the marine commerce industries themselves, what we measure is called throughput. Throughput is basically the activity of any kind of enterprise. What they spend with their employees, what they buy with services, their supplies, all those particular points. And for the marine enterprise, which includes things like the boat building, the supplies, the commercial fishermen, the processing, all of those activities, the direct annual throughput is $46 million a year. Then there's the food processing, which is the fish themselves, they're brought in, sent out, all those types of things. That's another $12.8 million annually for those activities. But that's not all of the numbers. You hear a lot, economists, we like to use words that nobody, no one else will use, and one is called the multiplier. And the multiplier measures the full effect of any business activity. Just for example, if you go to a store and you pay your bill, you go to a grocery store, they pay their employees. Those employees go out and pay, they pay their suppliers, they go out and buy additional things. So what you do is you look at that measurement throughout, and that's what the multiplier effect is. So when you take that total of 58.8 million and add a multiplier, it comes out to $98.6 million a year just from the marine commerce. And when we look at tourism, there are basically two types of tourists, overnight visitors and day visitors. Pretty simple. One will stay in your hotels overnight, you have a lot of day visitors here. People come in for the festivals, but they're, it's nice if they could stay overnight, but they come in, they go to the restaurants, they buy things here, and they contribute to your particular economic endeavors. And so it includes the hotels and motels. That's bed and breakfast as well, it's not just the larger ones. It's anyone that gives you accommodations overnight. There's retail spending. You spend a lot of money. I've sat there and watched a lot of the cash registers go over on, at the docks. Restaurants, sometimes nine o'clock at night, there's people waiting outside to get into the restaurants. That's the activity that we're talking about. If we look at the total throughput of tourist activities, it's $89.6 million annually. And could it be higher? The answer is yes. The limitation on it is hotel rooms, because the hotel rooms are pretty well full. So again, when we go to the, back to that multiplier, it's up to over $153 million a So if we look at the total impact for all the direct, for both marine commerce and tourism, it's 148.4, the indirect's 103. The marine commerce and tourism activity in Tarpon Springs is over $252 million a Now, the good thing is, they hire people. I mean, that's the reason you want to promote businesses, they hire the people that live here. And again, we looked at the numbers in terms of the generation of employment, both direct and indirect, for marine commerce and tourism industries. And there's a total of over 2,400 people who live in, who work in Tarpon Springs. And the important part, as we'll talk about later, that's over 21% of your total workforce, which means that's how important and integral they are to your community. Now, normally, we don't look at future development, and the reason is, it's speculative. And we did not put numbers on these two items, large boat repair and a hotel, but it would be wrong to ignore them. There were at least three of the people that we talked to who said that if the river was dredged and they could get larger boats in here, they would put in a lift and do large boat repair. Will all three of them come to fruition? Hard to say, but one of them would be good. And I think they are, those people are well enough financed that they could bring that project to bear. The other, in terms of putting together the old riverfront, the river view, like to a hotel, that's a distinct possibility, but again, that is more speculative because you have more work to do and you don't have, it's not as easy to cover. One of the other things we looked at was the quality of life. That was something that was requested in the RFP, and we looked at the number of festivals, the arts, events, and there's a tremendous support for the arts in this community. One of the days when we were here in town, I struck up a conversation with somebody at breakfast, and they were in town to attend their granddaughter's dance recital. The granddaughter didn't live in this community, they came in from the other, east side of Florida, but they came from Cincinnati to Tarpon Springs for a dance recital. That's as wide as your, as expansion goes. And I think that's something that you probably want to play on, that there is more of that. So it would be nice to have them come in for the dance recital, but maybe stay a couple days more, too. One of the things we looked at is obstacles, is are there real obstacles to continuation or expansion of the marine commerce? And we looked at those issues that really are important, and one is transportation. You all know, because you've tried to drive on US You all know, because you've tried to drive on US-19, that there are some times of the day it's a little tough, okay? We've also looked at alternate 19 and those difficulties. But we were able to go and get, collect the data from the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, there are improvements being planned. And I would recommend that they try to synchronize the lights, that would be something I think would be very helpful. But certainly, there are things in works to improve the transportation. There is competition, competition, Appalachia Cola, but further down in, from Tampa to St. Pete area, but you've got a very well-established marine commerce industry here. The other thing that we work, look at in an economic view is the workforce. Do you have enough people to do the jobs that you need to do? The answer is yes. And the other point is, do you need to train some people? Yes, you have, right down the street, you've got a training facility, vocational training, so you can, again, bring in the employment that you need. In terms of where you sit with Pinellas County, Pinellas County has just over 6 million overnight visitors a year. It's about 200,000 here in Tarpon Springs, which is about 3%. But that's because you don't have any more hotel motel rooms, so that's a disadvantage there. But when you look at the day visitors, it's 11% of the day visitors who come to Pinellas County come to Tarpon Springs. These are the numbers that that generated. And just for some possible lobbying purposes in the future, the bed tax generated in Tarpon Springs is over $453,000 a year. Commercial fishing. We looked at some records from the state of Florida in terms of the value of the fish The value of the fish landed in Tarpon Springs is 56% of the total value in Pinellas County. So what happens is, this is a major place in terms of bringing in that particular enterprise into the county and into the state. And our conclusion, annual impact, direct and indirect, $252 million a year, 2,400 jobs, which is 21% of the total workforce of the city. That's all I have for you. Present, and any questions, I'd be glad to help.
Well, thank you, Mr. Connor, thank you for the presentation. You gave us some excellent data that is going to be very useful to us. You, some of the numbers that you provide us is, I was expecting that it's going to be favorable, but not favorable, I'll be honest with you. But as you indicated, that the waterfront industry and tourism is the largest contributor that we have in Tarpon Springs in regards to our local economy. You also said that the total impact is $252 million, which provides almost close to 2,500 jobs. That's huge. The fishing industry provides $252 million, 56% of all the fish comes from Tarpon Springs, so that's, would be a contributor there as well. But you also point out some of the challenges that we have, that we need to have a hotel near the water, because you mentioned that the overnight visitors, it's only 3.3% of the Pinellas County, so that's something that we must work on and bring a hotel to the, near the water. The other challenge that you pointed out was the road improvements and transportation. I believe that we, as you know, we have three business communities here in Tarpon Springs, the US-19, the downtown, and the Sponge Docks. We need to find a way to connect those. We must find a way to transport visitors from one location to another, that's going to help us with the parking situation as well, where people can park down at the docks and they can come to downtown and do their shopping or vice versa. And so I think that's going to be, and I appreciate your comments on that. You also mentioned about the training the workforce. Not too far from here, we have the training, the vocational school down in Largo as well, we have the St. Petersburg College. Also, we'll be talking with, I've been talking with the Provost of St. Petersburg College to create a training center for workforce, for a medical biomedical training facility. So if that, if we get that going, I think that's going to be very helpful, because some of those jobs are very well rewarded. So I want to thank you for that, for all that information, and it's no brainer that dredging the Anclot River, that's going to help us to, to bring large boats here to Tarpon Springs to do the repairs that right now they can't do. After talking to one of the builders, boat builders down at the, at the river, he was telling me, he says, Chris, right now that I'm refusing work because I cannot bring those boats here to Tarpon Springs to get them repaired. So again, thank you for all, all that information, that's a good data, thank you very much. And Mrs. Slattery?
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank you for this, this study. This is well, so much long-needed, and this is, will help not only our Commerce Committee, but it will help Karen Lemmons, because we have been wanting to put a hotel somewhere down in Sponge Docks area, or somewhere close on the water, or somewhere in town, closer off of 19. And we never really had any true numbers to present to any hotel chains or anybody interested in coming in, you know, this is what we have, this is our daily traffic. So I hope that this, this helps Ms. Lemmons maybe attract some hotel chains coming in. This is, I mean, I was thrilled to see the numbers. And, and yeah, we have a working waterfront, and we do bring a lot of, you know, we have Rusty Bellies, with, all our fresh seafood comes in from there, and some of the other places on the, on the river. So it's so important that this really goes hand in hand with our next presentation for the dredging of the river, because this really helps, I think, and I'm glad that you all got to look at the study, and, because this goes hand in hand with the next presentation. But I'm just so thrilled to, to see, like I said, we needed this, this is much needed, so I appreciate your work on this. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yes, this is long overdue data. I mean, we've just been speculating about what we think it is, and this is exactly what we need for various aspects, including the dredge project and for Ms. Lemmons as well. You know, as was mentioned, I mean, I see our biggest thing here is lost revenue in bed tax. Now, Mark, I assume if we get more beds, we receive that bed tax directly, right? The city does? Okay. So that's a huge loss revenue. Did you, did I get that, that number wrong? Do we get 453,000 right now in bed tax, or is that?
That was what I estimated the generation based on the occupants.
Right, and I think that, you know, that's a, you know, I didn't realize it was that high with how small amount, amount of beds we have. So obviously, any increase in hotels, which would generate other revenue, we will get more in, in bed tax. And also, I think you said that we count for, what was it, 3% of, was it 3% of overnight visitors in Pinellas County?
3%, yeah, because that matches up with the rooms.
And then we have much more day visitors, as you pointed out, and I guarantee you, as has been said many times by, by, you know, by just people up here, that if they had a nice, I stress, nice place to stay, then they would be able to stay here and would, would prefer to. So I thank you for that, and then the fact that you pointed out that huge loss, loss revenue gap for us. But the fact that we do, you know, $250 million a year, as, as far as tourism dollars, that's a staggering number, that's higher than I thought it was. And that'll be, that'll be a very good tool for us to use for the dredge project and future ones to come, so thank you.
Thank you. Flashman, Terry Finn.
Thank you. Just, just to echo some of the, some of the comments, first of all, I appreciate your, your presentation tonight, the numbers are obviously outstanding, and we're all extremely pleased with that, but I'm also appreciative of the extent of your research in terms of, you know, talking to people off the street, and, you know, talking to the person at breakfast, and just the, you know, the real nitty-gritty of your research, so I can appreciate you doing that. You know, for years, as I've been trying to sell real estate in Tarpon Springs, I've told people that 800,000 to a million tourists a year, you know, come through town and come through the Sponge Docks. And I thought that number was true. I mean, that's what I was told.
Was.
So, you know, a million one is even better. So I mean, you know, I'm thankful for that, that, you know, the information I was giving was pretty true, but even, we've gone up by 100,000. So, so that's, you know, a number for me that was eye-opening. You know, Commissioner Slattery said that, she talked a little bit about the intangible benefit that this report gives to Ms. Lemmons and other people as they try and, you know, help develop or redevelop or sell property in Tarpon Springs. So, you know, this, this report was done, you know, with the idea of the river dredge, which is, you know, why we did it, and why it was paid for, and where we got the funding from, and everything like that, which is great. But the intangible benefit of having this report for Karen's purposes, and just, you know, your average real estate broker's purposes, or just for the public's information, you know, that benefit is huge. So, you know, I really see that as, as value as well. Commissioner Banther's point about the overnight bed tax, I mean, you know, just, I mean, everybody has said for years and years, we need a hotel, and, you know, you got to build it and they'll come, and blah, 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 which is all true. But I mean, to look at the actual numbers that you've presented tonight, which is, you know, we get 11% of the tourism in terms of day visits in Pinellas County, but we only get 3.3% of the night visits. So, you know, from a, from a revenue generating standpoint, I mean, if we can just get that hotel, even if you could convert, you know, an extra 2% of that 11%, you know, and you get to 5%, you're talking, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax revenue. So, so we got it, you know, that's huge. You know, and it'll all come, I mean, Rome wasn't built in a night, but, you know, for the most part, those are, those are my comments. Appreciate the extent of your research, and look forward to our next presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
Good evening. Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. I was mostly going to ask this question of you, did you do any survey on the demand of what we could withstand for having hotels and motels here?
We did not. We were not doing a hotel feasibility study here. But what we did look at is the amount of occupancy, the occupancy rate at the hotels, and how many people would have liked to stay overnight if they could have.
Okay. Thank you very much, because that's what I would like to know, before you go forward with any kind of proposal of what hotels or motels we should put in by the water or in Tarpon. I would like to see that we know approximately how many people would be wanting to stay here. So that's my comments.
Thank you.
Pier to Lax 514, Ashland Avenue. Excuse me, I didn't get a chance to actual read the report, but I did have a couple of things I would like to get a clarification on. First off, when you read what it says about the bed tax, it says bed tax generated. Now, we need to clarify something here. Bed tax goes to the county, they use that for visit, visit Pinellas, they use it for some stadium fundings, they use it for some other projects that the county commission agrees on. But I don't remember in our budgets ever seeing a line item saying, we got money from the county from the bed tax. So what I would like is a clarification to see exactly if we do receive money from the county from the bed tax, and if that's the case, what the percentage is, because I think it would be a lot different than the 453, 700,000 that you're being referred to. So we need to clarify what's generated and what we received are two different things. Now, we've been talking about hotels for years, that's not the issue I'm going to talk about, because I'm more concerned about the marine commerce. Transportation roadway improvements. A lot of these potential, if you look at the map, I guess the third page, fourth page, whatever, it shows most of these vacant industrial and marine parcels are on the north side of the river, we know that. But the logistics of getting them supplies, workforce to there, is going to be an issue we need to have some kind of working with, with our MPO. One, we put in Live Oak, I can see trucks and trailers coming down Live Oak to come up to Anclot, but that bridge at alternate 19 behind the Old Pappas's either needs to be expanded or that intersection redone if you're going to have large trailer trucks or commercial vehicles coming in. Otherwise, you're going to have to come in off of what, by Brittany Park and come out down Old Dixie Highway through the neighborhoods, and they're going to fuss if they got big tractor-trailers. So that's something that really, I think, needs to be focused on as a commission to look at how we can work with the county and our people, because that's going to be a very significant logistic aspect to attracting those type of businesses, because, yeah, the river dredging's coming, and we could definitely use some more marine things. And then also, I don't know, when you talk about training, and you referenced a school down the street, were you referring to P-Tech, or, you know, where would people get training for those types of jobs?
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. The next presentation is on the Anclot River dredging. Mr. Robinson's going to give us an update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. I'm Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager and Anclot River Dredge Project Manager. I got, I'm here tonight with a snapshot summary update of the Anclot River project. I'll start by saying we've come a long way since we started this, and the Marine Commerce Committee first met in March of this year. Pleased to say that the project's moving right along. I'll summarize some of the items, the bullet points that are in your backup, and if there's any questions on the details, we can certainly get to those at the end. So this update starts with a new examination survey that the Army Corps provided us just back in September. If you recall, we started with a survey of the Anclot River channel that was incomplete, and it was two years old. Now, we've got one that goes all the way out to full extent of the channel, and it's a brand-new update. So that's a great thing. That wasn't originally scheduled till 2017 by the Army Corps, but they were able to accelerate that, I think, thanks in, in large part to the public interest that this project has. So that's a good thing. Along with that survey, the Army Corps recomputed the amount of material that we would need to dredge out of the channel. And with a configuration that they're recommending, we were able to take the number that they presented and apply that to, as a criteria to compare to the sites that we'd recognize, that we'd identified for the spoils, narrowing it down to three, that could hold the quantity of material that we would need. Those three, the owners of those three sites, those three sites are not for sale, but the owners of all three of those sites have entertained and negotiated with us some leasing pricing, and all three in some form or another have either suspended or offered to rearrange some of the development plans that they're looking at in the future to accommodate our project. So we have some, some good options available to us there at this time. Tonight, we're not ready to make a recommendation on a site, because we're still waiting for some, for some more information. One of the pieces of information we're waiting on is a preference of the Army Corps. I presented those three sites to the Army Corps, all the technical information involved with those sites. Would like to get their feedback on, on a site, if they have one. I think it was prudent to, to at least get the feedback on that, we don't have that information just yet. The other opportunity I'm looking at is, involves cost sharing. There are two pieces of the cost component for the spoil sites. One is the lease, the other is the cost of developing that site, or we'll call it the construction of the site. In the last dredge, we paid for all of that. But I feel like that the cost to develop that site should be included as a construction component of the dredge. And I felt like it was worth a shot to ask the Army Corps to take another look at that and see if they can include that for federal funding. That component represents anywhere from 50 to 80% of the cost of the site, so I thought it was worth a shot. They are currently entertaining that request, I don't have an answer for you yet. you yet on that, but I thought it was worth asking. Regardless, even if they don't come through with that, we're looking at a cost range for the lease plus the development construction costs ranging between $720,000 to $920,000, depending on which site, um, we, we wind up going with. So, that is the, the snapshot, uh, update. As I said, the, we're waiting on that response from the Army Corps. Our next step will be to take the information that you just saw in that economic impact study, package it with, with the numbers that we're able to finally recommend here, and prepare an information package. Karen and I will work on that to share with Senator Jack LaValle, who is continuing to support our project as we look for state funding for the, the spoil site property. Um, I'll leave it at that. If there's some questions, I'd be happy to get in any details you'd like.
Thank you for the update. Uh, Mr. Licouris, I'd also like to thank all of the employees that have been involved with this project. They do an excellent job. And all the MCC Advisory Board members there, working so hard. Some of you are here today. Thank you for, for your work and your interest to get that going. Uh, I am very glad that the, uh, the pathimetric survey has been completed, and the Army Corps of Engineers, now they're thinking about, um, you know, dredging 11 feet instead of 10. One foot makes a big difference.
It's a huge difference.
Uh, I think that's gonna give us the ability to have bigger boats coming in to be repaired. In regards to the three spoil sites, uh, my hope was we'd be able to purchase that. That way, uh, this way, we can actually use a site later for different, uh, different uses, for different functions. But, uh, from what I hear, that's not available. So, but, um, uh, it is a great idea that you come up with to include the construction cost to the, uh, so the Army Corps of Engineers to pay for that. I think it's great.
Worth a try.
Yeah. And, uh, what I'd like to say is when those packages are ready, and, uh, I like to, personally, I like to hand-deliver those to Senator LaValle, to the representative spoils, to Representative Chris LaValle. Um, that way, they can see the emphasis that we actually have on this project. It's very, very important to our local economy. Also, if we can prepare packages for, to be delivered to Congressman, uh, Gus Billarakas, and also to the newly-elected Congressman Charlie Crist. Um, in addition to that, we, if we can deliver packages to Senator Nelson, Senator Rubio. Mr. Licouris, we've got a lot of driving to do.
[laughing]
So, anyway, uh, I think it's, it's great that we are moving along, and I tell you, everybody is anxious and can't wait to see that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the work you do. Commissioner Panther?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Bob, for all the good work that, that you have been and, um, I'm sure will, will, will be doing on, on, on this project and for those present that, that, that are on the board too as well. I do, I do, I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, as far as, uh, as I mentioned of the relocation of the navigation channel, has the, um, committee been able to comment on that yet? Have they had discussions on that?
We did present this to the Marine Commerce Committee, and we discussed in detail. Um, you got the, the quick summary here, but we did talk about the relocation of that channel. And for the benefit of those listening, um, there's a section of the channel that would require extensive dredging. And rather than looking at that cost, uh, the Army Corps decided to simply relocate the channel away from Anklo Key, so that they wouldn't have to dredge it. Pretty simple solution. Um, and that saves a significant amount of cost related to the dredge. But, uh, yes, that has been presented and discussed.
Was the committee in agreement with that pretty much? They, they pretty much?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, good. Um, and I assume, as far as when we had our little boat tour with them, uh, is, is, it was, I assume, has, has, did, did part of, of this information come, come from that? Or is there still more to come from there, when, when they came out and we took them out on a little tour?
Well, I think, um, part of what spurred the, the desire to move forward with the project and get that survey done was that boat tour. When we had the Army Corps there, we had the Coast Guard there, we had Pinellas County there, um, really showing that it was important for the Army Corps to see that we were all so united behind getting this project going. And now we see what the economic impact is to, to doing this and keeping this river functional. Um, yeah, it, it's helped.
Yeah, I, I, I think that study will be not the nail in the coffin. That's a bad analogy, but it'll be the, maybe the final thing that'll help really put it to, to the top of their agenda. Um, as far as, and this is just for my, for, for my education, the, is it, is it three different sites we're looking at for the, for the, for the spoil site?
At this time, yes.
And is, is purchasing not an option because of finances, or because of people that actually own the sites that don't, don't, don't wanna sell them?
It is the second answer. The, the owners do not want to sell.
Um, and do you see the, so, so in your overall opinion, is this, is this project on track as far as kind of the timeline that, that, that we, we have outlined?
In my opinion, yes. Things are falling into place right now. There's still a long way to go, but there's, we're getting there.
Oh, I know there's a long way to go. I know there is, but, uh, I, it's, and thanks to people in, 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 in this audience, it has, it has gone at lightning speed, you know, from, from, from how government moves, so.
For a federal project involving a city, a county, a state, and the federal, we're, we're doing good, I think.
Because we use the all, all, all-hands-on, on-deck approach. It can't just be one person. So, thank you.
Thank you. I wanna give thanks to all the Marine Commerce Committee members for your basically volunteerism on, uh, this particular subject, and of course, to Bob Robertson for his expertise. I really don't think we could have a better project manager on, on this particular job. So, uh, thanks to you, Bob, and thanks for, uh, the, to the committee members. Um, just, uh, a couple things. Um, I understand why, what we're waiting on now to select the spoil site. Um, and I can always appreciate, you know, having more money or more funding, you know, by somebody else versus us. It allows us to, you know, spend our money in other ways. Um, so I can appreciate that. But when do you think timeframe-wise, you'll have an answer and we'll be able to actually move forward with selecting a site?
I'm thinking we'll have a recommendation within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, great.
And that's what we'll put in our package.
Okay. Um, as far as, let me just weigh in on my thoughts as far as buying versus leasing a site. And first and foremost, you know, you can't buy something if it's not, you know, for sale necessarily. So, um, so I can appreciate that. But I will say that, you know, in dealing with, uh, city assets and city property, and whether or not it's better to lease or own, in this particular case, it would have to be a site that was, uh, so far out of the, uh, growth pattern in terms of development for me to really support, uh, the city buying it. Uh, because as we know, if, when the city owns a, a piece of property, we don't collect any ad valorem taxes, or we don't, you know, there's, that job, or that site can't be redeveloped for, you know, Marine Commerce, or it can't be redeveloped from a residential standpoint. So, I really feel like, you know, if, if this, if there was a site that was, you know, further out of that development corridor or growth pattern, then it would be more viable, and I would be more interested, of course, it would have to be for sale, in buying it. But because of where, you know, the, the growth is headed in terms of redevelopment or future development within our city, I don't see it as a huge benefit to us to own a site, you know, especially if it's just a dredge site. Because after we get done with this dredge, you know, hopefully, this dredge will last us another, you know, 10, 15, however many years, in which case, that site will be relatively underutilized and off the tax records for however long we own it. So, that's my, you know, personal belief on that subject. Um, uh, moving forward, not to muddy the waters, but it is something that I've mentioned to Karen Lemmons and also you, Bob, as far as, uh, you know, other areas of our town and river and river system that need to be dredged. And I understand that, you know, with the Army Corps and this dredging project, that in order to have the Army Corps support and, and them, uh, you know, at the helm here, that, that the dredging can only be part of the main river channel. So, I can appreciate that. However, you know, we have more waterfront than anybody in Pinellas County in terms of a town. And we also have ad valorem taxes based on, you know, that waterfront. So, it's important that we take care of all of our waterfront, not just the Marine, you know, the, the, uh, main river channel.
Certainly.
So, that said, you know, I understand it would have to be two separate projects if we were to do dredging anywhere other than the, the main river channel. But I do think that it is necessary for us to look at that. Um, put it, like I said, I wanna muddy the waters, because this is first and foremost. But I, I do think that it's important for us to look at that as we do all of our other projects slated for the future, because there are areas of town that need to be dredged in the bayous, or, you know, on little tributaries off the main river. I mean, a perfect example is, you know, where, where Duckworth is, right? Our, you know, one of our big, great boat builders. I mean, their little finger of the channel is not the main river channel, and that's where some of the biggest boats in the river go in to get, you know, worked on or built, or whatever the case may be. So, I mean, you know, that is extremely important for us to look at. So, I don't know if there's any way to potentially piggyback, uh, you know, with this contractor who's gonna be performing this work in the future, or what. But just know that, to me, it's important to, you know, really look at and try and plan for. Uh, and I can always appreciate, you know, mobilizing one time versus two. So, uh, those are my comments. Thanks to everyone involved.
Thank you. We're now going to the public comments?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed you.
I'm sorry. I just, um, a couple of quick things. Um, I did have a question about when we would see the options of some of the sites, the spoil sites that you had in mind for us. So, you're saying within a couple of weeks?
Yeah, I'm looking to get that answer within a couple of weeks.
So, when it comes to one of these sites, now, one could be down here on the river, one can be up here on the river. Um, does that make much of a difference of the location when it comes to, you know, where, where are we gonna put all the?
It certainly does, and it, and it can, it plays into a couple of things. Um, one being the, the cost of the, uh, piping of the, getting the material to the site, to the property. So, you may have more costs upfront related to that, but you may have a site that doesn't need to be, have as much clearing, or the elevations are better or more favorable, so you don't have to berm it up so high to retain this material. And all that was factored into the cost that you see there. Um, the, the piping actually is considered a part of the construction cost. So, that, actually, I apologize, that's a misstatement. That's not part of the site development there. Um, but, yeah, all those things get factored in.
And so, with, with all this sand that we're bringing in, are we going to refurbish some of the beaches with any of that sand, you know, or?
Well, that depends on the quality of the material. Right now, we don't know for sure, um, if it has a high silt quality, quantity, that it can't be applied to a beach, 'cause then that'll run off into, and affect water quality. Um, most of that'll probably have to be retained. Probably, it'd be good enough quality for fill to be used possibly for city projects, or those kinds of things. Um, some of the material, we expect way out in, in the Gulf, past the, the Key, to be beach re-nourishment quality. And what we're gonna be looking at with the Army Corps, uh, possibly using that material for some of the beaches for re-nourishment, where has not been determined just yet.
Okay, great. Um, and I know there was talk about redirecting the channel a little bit. Um, so, as this project's going on, the channel still remains open, correct? So, the boats are still coming in and out, and they're doing the work as we keep the channel going, right?
That's my understanding. I, I, I've not been on a barge when they're doing dredging, but, um, I imagine that there's a way to keep that, uh, under, uh, current operation. If there's not, then, then we may have to look at working with the Coast Guard for possible temporary dredging or some of that effect. I, I, it could get complicated. And just like any kind of construction job, like when you build a new road, I'm sure there's gonna be some difficulties.
Yeah. Um, and we talked about dredging in other areas of our, um, waterways. Like, I'm thinking about, is Tom Fung still here? Sunset Beach, 'cause, you know, I've been pushing, you know, really wanting this, um, new boat launch. So, and I think that has to be dredged out there.
Yeah, and, and to answer your and the Vice Mayor's question, um, you know, those smaller-type projects, we wouldn't necessarily have to have a permanent spoil site to do projects like that. Uh, you can design systems. There are companies that can do in, in-place treatment, where they let the material settle, capture the materials without having to have a site to do it, especially for smaller jobs. I, I would say the best approach would be to approach those jobs as individual, separate jobs, just like we would do any other capital project.
Sunset Beach, we finally, after four and a half years, have the permit in hand, so we'll be going out to bid to do that.
Okay. It's on the record. Thank you. And I do, [laughing] thank you, Mark, and, um, and Tom. Um, but I do wanna thank the Commerce Committee, Marine Commerce Committee, and everybody that's involved in this project. Um, there's people that are involved that are not sitting on the committee, but are working hard to help them as well and guide everybody. Um, and I wanna thank, and they're all volunteers. So, I wanna thank you for all your time. And, and Bobby, you did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're now going to the public comments?
Good evening. Athena Sardulius, 634 East Orange. And I also wanna thank Bob for his very thorough, uh, presentation and work. We, we had a lot of questions for him during his initial presentation. So, I'll spare you all, all of that. Um, I have just one comment, and that regards a permanent spoil site. And I am sensitive to what Vice Mayor Tarpani was speaking about, but also the need for continual dredging of all the waterways. As you say, not just the federal channel, but the bayous, the inlets, Mr. Duckworth area, and so on. So, I understand it's, it is, um, the way our charter is written, there is a long process and public input referendum before the city can purchase, uh, any piece of property. And I understand also that it, it may lie fallow, for lack of a better word, uh, until the next dredge. But we just saw the numbers. This river is critically important to our economy, and I understand the need for speed. And for this project, um, it's important to move forward. It is a safety issue out there, and we don't have the time, per se, to set up a referendum and so forth for voters to approve or not approve. So, I get that. But I want us to think long-term vision, the next 50 years of this city, and so on. As property gets developed, which we hope it will, hotels or other opportunities, more available land is gonna be bought up and, and unavailable for a spoil site. Perhaps technology will catch up. Bob can, you know, better answer that than me. Maybe we won't need so much open land in the future. I don't know. But I want us to be mindful of that. Possibly an effort, you know, ongoing to, to look at acquiring a piece of property that would be suitable, so we can guarantee in perpetuity the, this channel remains open, you know, for, long before our lifetimes. So, that's my only comment.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Clonares, can I invite you to say a few words?
Hello, uh, Ponder Lee Clonares, 200 Miras Boulevard. Um, yeah, it's been a, it's been a, a lot of activity in a short amount of time. And working with Karen and Athena and Bob and everyone, and garnering support from the, uh, greater legislative body and whatnot, I, I think we have come a long way. Um, the, uh, the river dredge itself is, it's a maintenance dredge. It's a, you know, something that should happen on a schedule and, and be automatic as needed. Um, and, and it is a big project. So, those are kind of the, the two, uh, opposing sides of the project. You know, it's, it's automatic in a maintenance dredge, and, um, at the same time, it's very complicated. Um, we were very happy with the, uh, the economic impact study. And I, I did have a couple questions for Mr. Gennad about, um, some of the things that Mr. Tarpani mentioned. Um, in particular, with if we dredge the, the ancillary waterfront properties, would that increase the value of those properties? Um, because a, a big part of waterfront property is, is the, the access, the, the depth of the water. Um, and I know deep water comes at a high premium in, in real estate value, um, which translates to tax revenue. Um, so that, that was one question I had for him. Uh, another standout number was the, uh, the 56% of, of the, the fish stocks that, that come through Tarpon Springs. Um, that's important. Uh, I, I think that's important a, as a financial number. And, um, excuse me, I wasn't planning on coming up. Uh, also just, it's locally sourced, sustainable food. It's, it's very natural, healthy, uh, food that, um, you know, I think we, we should value. And, and I'm sure there's a premium for that. Um, did, do you guys have any questions for me? No? Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments? Here, non. Thank you, uh, Bob. We are now going to consent agenda.
If, if you could, Mayor.
Sorry?
Pull, pull item six. I need to talk about that verbally. Could you just do item four and five, and then go to six? And I need to talk verbally about number six.
Sure. Consent agenda, item number four, satisfaction and release of liens, and number five is the 20 feet. Number six will be pulled. Anything else that you'd like to put? Number six will be pulled. Anything else that you'd like to pull? No? Okay. Are there any public comments on those two items? Here none. Any commission comments? I will entertain a motion for the two items.
Move approval.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarpani?
Yes.
Merrill Ouzis.
Yes. We're going to the item number six, which is approve the, uh, 2016, 2017 School Resource Officer, SRO contract with the Pinellas County School Board. Mr. Licoris.
Yes, this item is for our school resource contract we do every year. The reason I needed to pull it is the police had two items, um, coming tonight. The one had to be pulled from the agenda, unfortunately, the wrong one got pulled from the agenda. But this item is simply to renew the SRO agreement, and, uh, we do, we are getting more money. We're going from 135, 941 to 139, 068. So we will be getting, I don't know, is that a percentage, Bob, or 3% or something like that? So this is the standard contract, standard language. It's been reviewed by the attorney. It's the same language we've had. Obviously, we do our schools, including the elementary schools, so this is the reimbursement that, uh, they send back to us for those services, so. So it's forward for you to, to approve and, uh, get the money from the school system.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on that? Any public comments on that item? Here none. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
We got first and second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarpani?
Yes.
Merrill Ouzis.
Yes. We're now going to the special consent agenda, which is item number seven, the asphalt street paving program. Mr. Licoris?
Yes, Mr. Funchen is going to come up to give us our annual program.
Good evening, Tom Funchen, Public Works Director. Uh, this is, uh, in front of you is a list of prioritized streets that we do for a bi-annual resurfacing or, uh, repaving program. Uh, it's based on, uh, uh, technical criteria, which includes, uh, drivability, potholes, utility repairs. And we put it in a prioritized, prioritized list. Uh, this list here will show you a number of different things. The first six streets, uh, are, are based on the, uh, the bi-annual list we put there up every year. Uh, the last three are additional, uh, paving programs we want, we intend to do, including, uh, Tarpon Avenue intersection, uh, Boys and Girls Club Basketball Court, and the, uh, Richard Irving Park. The reason why they're, they're, they're on this list here is because of economy of scale. We attempted to do those last year, but because they're small projects, they cost quite a bit more money to do. So we decided to put them a part of this, to make it part of the, uh, the lower the cost of doing those projects. Uh, there are, one other big project here is a part of the paving, is part of the MLK Boulevard. Uh, that street there, as we've known, uh, about 200 feet west of the intersection of, uh, Pinellas Avenue, there's been a depression there for quite a while. Uh, we did hire an engineering firm this year to look at it and, uh, make some recommendations on repairs. Uh, those repairs prior, will be done prior to the resurfacing, and we're able to do those repairs in-house. So there'll be no additional cost as far as resurfacing that. Otherwise, that's what I have here. I'm open for any questions.
And just to make a note on that, um, if anybody, if you remember the board's decision to enter in the agreement with the church on Gulf Road for the basketball court, if any of you drive by those all the time, you see the tremendous use of those courts that we did. This is a similar, everybody remembers the old Boys and Girls Club there, hat, hat nets there, so this is a similar type of thing. And as we can see, the use is there, because some nights, there's 20, 25 kids on that court on Gulf Road. So this is another case for a simple, small paving project that we can do that. Also, um, if anybody has seen and coming up soon, I hope to have a presentation in the picture as we're getting closer to complete Richard Irwin Parkway, just a little bit of changes are coming there. Not, that is going to be a beautiful park on the lake, and we're just doing some adjustments in the parking lot, and that's the final piece of it, and while we're contracted to do this other work, um, that's why that's added in there, so.
Yeah, but individually, it would cost a lot more to pave those three areas, so by putting them in here, we get the economy of scale and save some money for the city.
We've seen that small projects are way, people does not want to do small projects, and they're coming in two or three times what they should be coming in, so this will save us money on all of those to put it within this one in one contract.
Thank you. I have some questions to ask.
Go ahead.
Okay, item number one, the, uh, the depression area of, uh, Marlothakine.
Yes.
The one that you're waiting to stabilize before you pave it.
Yes.
How long is that going to take?
Uh, we're gonna probably have it shut down for about a week. Uh, well, well, we're gonna try to work around as a holiday, and then we'll reroute the traffic, uh, down Banana Street and up Morgan Street.
Yeah.
But it'll take us about a week to do that, and we're doing all that work in-house.
Right. Uh, this is the main road. It, you know, a lot of school buses go through there, and I think.
Yeah, that's why we're gonna work on scheduling. Once we get this out to bid and I get a schedule back from the, uh, from the contractor, we'll work that all around, so we don't, we minimize any effect on local traffic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, on item number nine, says crack and seal. Have you included the, uh, the tennis court that won on the Riverside Drive and Sunset? We've been getting a lot of complaints on that, that it's a lot of cracks there.
It's not in here, but, no, but it's going out to bid. We have the money separately, um, and that will be going out to bid within the next week or so.
Okay, so that's not part of the item number nine?
No, no, but we will be completely redoing the Riverside Tennis Court with, but with the budgeted money that we have in this budget.
Yeah, that, that crack and seal is part of our program. Anytime you're resurfacing, you have road cracks, uh, you need to seal them so you don't get water infiltration through the roadway, and then the surface, the cracks will resurface again. So that's an important part of, of repaving.
Any idea how long it will take to be completed?
Uh, not, not, I will know until after the bids come in. There's, there's ways to work with different contractors on how they mobilize, so it depend on the contractor. Uh, usually not very long, usually it takes.
Last, it wasn't long at all. They got everything done, in fact, way ahead of what they said. It was.
Yeah, and this is not that many streets. I know the last few years, we've done as many as 12 or 13 streets, and they have to mobilize on every street. In this case here, since Riverside is so long, that'll be one mobilization just on that street alone. Uh, that should go pretty quick, so probably a few weeks, probably did the whole project.
Well, thank you. Uh, Mr. Licoris, the two streets coming to the city hall, the Pine Street and Ring Avenue, that also we need to, uh, include that on the list, because that's all the traffic coming to the city hall. Uh, also the traffic going to the elementary school, a lot of school buses coming through there. And of course, city hall is the center of our city, we need to.
We just paved.
When you sidewalk plus landscape.
Well, again, we got, we're doing priority and need, and those will be ones that will be coming up, uh, on the list.
Yeah, we recently paved Ring Avenue, and we did some work on Pine Street, the big street that really needs the attention is, uh, is, uh, Gross Avenue. But that is going to be under a part of our stormwater, which we'll be coming back to you fairly soon on that, on that whole project.
Good, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Uh, Tom, it looks like we're pa- paving basically all Riverside Drive?
Uh, yeah, the bottom two are just in case of extension, depending on what the bids come in, the prices. I've, I've been talking to a couple of different contractors. Prices are all over the place right now, because of the price of oil, so I'm hoping to, to stretch some of this. That's why the extra streets are down there.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it. It just.
It needs it.
It basically looks, I mean, you have it broken up, you know, into three or four, three different, uh, sections, but it says Riverside Drive from Tarpon Ave, which I guess that's, uh, Spring Bayou, but you're calling it Riverside.
No, actually, it's Tarpon Drive. Tarpon Drive, it's, uh, it was a misspelling on there. Tarpon Drive is, uh, where Riverside Drive comes to the three-way stop just past Bay Shore.
Yeah.
Uh, that's actually county.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, because I thought that Riverside, from, I mean, I thought from the bridge to that intersection where you're talking about, that's county owned, right?
That's all county. North, North Riverside Drive, or North Spring, as some people call it, is, is all county.
Right, okay, so it's, so it's, uh, Tarpon Drive then?
Tarpon Drive, yes. And again, if that's broken up in sections, depending on how the prices come in, you know, if they can do the whole thing for less, of course, I'd do the whole thing.
Well, I mean, it looks, I mean, just the Tarpon Ave-Safford intersection, I mean, a preliminary on that came back at like a couple hundred thousand or something, right? Now it's down to 10, that's great.
Well, that's, that's the resurfacing. It doesn't have the, the, we talked about the medallion in the center there. That, this is just the resurfacing.
It was about three times.
What about the medallion?
It would have been, it was, excuse me?
What about the medallion?
That's gonna have to go out on a different, different fee.
Okay. Um, and then I, I may know the answer to this question, but, uh, Athens Street from Pinellas to Mill? Why are we stopping at Mill? Because of, uh, landscape project, or?
Uh, yeah, and there's, there's, there's a couple of challenges in there with some utilities, and it's all had to be touched on too, so.
Okay. Where are, since we're talking about that, where are we with the, that streetscape project on, the lighting project on Athens?
Um, we should be, again, that's the one we're holding back because of the season, so we should be able to go get it out and, and start that after the season.
Do we have any preliminary, uh, conceptuals as far as what we're gonna do there for the board to discuss?
Yeah, we're working, we, we, we've kind of got the one for the main stretch, but the rest of it, we're working on now. The, the stretch, um, outside the Athens part, we're working on what we can get in, and working on maybe getting some right-of-way. We have very little right-of-way on the sidewalk, so we're still working, um, on that. We'll bring those to you before that, before it comes about.
I knew that was part of the problem there.
Hopefully, hopefully, we're gonna try to get some cooperation, because we've got hardly any, any right-of-ways, hope. And Athens, when you get out of the business section, we've got very little room. And hopefully, like we did on Dodo Canes, and like we're doing Alter 19, we'll get some citizen cooperation and, uh, some agreements, and, uh.
Yeah, you're dealing with about five times as many property owners, though.
Yeah.
Um, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Slattery, I won't forgive you this time.
No comment.
No comment?
No comment.
No comment? Okay. We're now going to the public comments on this item.
Anita Frodis, 901 Bay Shore Drive. I haven't seen the list, but the street in front of, um, Bill Vincent's Law Office is, has so many indentations in it, and it's so rough. You can tear your oil pan if you go over it, or hit the bottom of your car. Is that on the list? I think it's Levis. Is it Levis?
That's next year for brick.
This is the asphalt.
Tom, can, Tom address that? We just did something with that.
It's so bad.
Yes, that's reconstruction. That is actually an engineering right now being designed. We will be doing some temporary repairs on that, but it will be, it's in design right now for.
Okay, I've gone over it, and you have to go real slow. It's dangerous. And also the road in front of Mr. Sublocky's across the street where the filling station is, the part from, uh, Alter 19 till you hit the pavement, that's very rough. You know, you really hit some low spots on that one.
I'm happy to answer.
Okay.
There's actually four streets on the reconstruction list, which is Ring Avenue, Levis, uh, Cedar Streets, the section.
Okay.
Which is actual engineering, and also Lemon Street, uh, from the Bayou to Bath Street.
Okay, that's good to know, because it is very dangerous. Uh, I have to drive very slow over it. But it can damage your car. And just something for you to think about, it won't happen in my lifetime, maybe 50 years down the road. There was a plan in the city in the 90s to put a pipe from, um, the bayou area across from the old Chiracus Packing House to the bayou with grates in the road, so it could flush back and forth and keep that bayou, that part of the bayou alive and clean, back and forth. You know where I'm talking about?
Pinellas Street.
Um.
Roosevelt.
Yeah, it's Roosevelt, and to go all the way to around the bayou. Something to think about. It was an environmental, uh, uh, purpose that we had thought about it. I don't know if the city still has those plans or not, but it was pretty good. And then I got out of office and others left, and it never was worked on. But they had told us the flushing action between the bayou would help the bayou and would help that little bayou area, behind the church there, and in front of where Chiracus Packing House is, it was dying, and it was, it wasn't healthy. And they said that would be a very healthy project environmentally for the city to look at. It's just something that we had done long ago. If you could find it, it'd be worth looking at 10, 15 years down the road.
Thank you. Any other comments? We hear none. I need a motion.
Approval. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarpani?
Yes.
Merrill Ouzis.
Yes. We're now going to the item number eight, Historical Society Train Deportive Support Position. Mr. Licoris.
What I'm bringing you tonight is, is for now, a temporary, um, fix to enable the Historical Society to command their building at this time. Uh, this has been brought about, about the position becoming open, and with it open now, there does need to be some changes. It really is not a position that works with our personnel, um, rules and regs, because we really have nobody supervising, but we're gonna be talking to Historical Society about some maybe different methods to do it, and right now, what we want to try for a couple of months, so we can at least get them through, um, the holidays with manpower, because by the time, if we were to keep it the same and go out and advertise, test, and do, it'd be January or so before they get a position. But what I want to do is take the portion, the monthly portion of that budgeted money that we have for the position, and, and give that, um, to the Historical Society for a couple of months, so they can get their own person, um, to man it, uh, while we develop that plan and get it back to you. It's about, when you take the position and divide it, it's about a thousand dollars a month. So what we'd do, we would give the first thousand, they would give us the reimbursement for their manpower that they use for that, and then we renew that for another month. And I want to do that for a few months, um, till we can get set what we want to bring back to you and how we want to handle that position. So, so I just want to bring that, um, to you tonight, to allow me to do that and, uh, get them the check this week to start and, uh, keep it manned during the holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Licoris, the Historical Society was going to be the employer?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the temporary employment, that's gonna be for there. Because again, otherwise, I could get a temporary employee, but again, it'd take the whole process. It'd take me a month and a half or two months, and the whole holidays would go, and they wouldn't be manned, so.
Thank you. I think it's very important that we support the Historical Society, uh, to preserve and exhibit our history, and I think, uh, we should support that. Any, uh, comments, questions? Any public comments on this item? No? You do? No, okay. Thank you. I hear none. Uh, motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarpani?
Yes.
Merrill Ouzis.
Yes. We are now going to item number nine, which is Resolution 2016 dash 38, uh, fiscal year, um, 2016 Final Budget Resolution.
Resolution 2016 dash 38, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, meanting the budget for fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Licoris.
Mr. Ron Herring will give this presentation?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Ron Herring, Finance Director. Budget Resolution 2016 38 is the final budget resolution for the previous year. We're just closing out fiscal year 2016. And what we have is just some final items that were not budgeted for before, and we're just bringing them before you just to put the budget in form. They include the City Attorney's Department, Fire Department, Building Development, Tree Bank, Arts Historical Resources Department, Heritage Center, and a NEA grant. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any, uh, commission comment?
I just have, what is an NEA grant?
National Endowment Association. It's a cultural grant, and, uh, it's mostly, I think they're using it. We get about $35,000 a year, and they think they mostly use it for a lot of the shows they have down on the sponge docks and stuff, for those performances and stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
Ron, thank you for meeting with me. Go over, uh, all those items.
Oh, sure.
Into your office, but I do have a question for Mr. Licoris. Mr. Licoris, that item which says fire overtime, 219,000. Uh, this is in addition to 469,000, I'm sorry, uh, 275,000, so total of, uh, 469. Seems like it's a lot of overtime. Do you think that we understaff at the Fire Department? Do we need to hire somebody to, uh?
Well, again, we talked about during, we talked about this during budget time. If you remember, we talked about this and looking at. But there are a lot of other, there were other factors that were involved in this. Ron, you want to go into a few of those?
Well, usually something, we, usually the salaries, the regular salaries would, would be, would be able to cover this. But what we found this year, we had seven fire employees that were terminated. And between that and the vacation sellback money, which both of them are not budgeted, that came to like about $180,000. So I think there was two or three employees that also went into the drop program. When they go into the drop, you, the vacation and sick money is paid off. So we had some sizable amounts this year, which, like I say, came to about $180,000.
Yeah, and that's the difference. A lot of times when people are off, you do overtime, you're not paying the one salary, so it really offsets each other. That's why it didn't offset. But as I, again, as I said during budget time, we are looking at that in January, I believe. January or early February, the, the fire grant that I told you opens up, um, the process opens up again. I know Commissioner Banther brought that forward and, and to go. I believe we're gonna be asking for three or four firefighters with that, with that grant. Obviously, that'll give us two or three years where most of it's paid for by, by them, and then we'll assimilate it. If that doesn't go, though, we are gonna be working on a plan, um, to add. Um, if that doesn't go though, we are gonna be working on a plan, um, to add fire people. But obviously, we want to see what our opportunity is for that grant. So we'll be applying for that in, in again, late January or February for the next cycle. And, uh, hopefully that is one of the methods we're going to, to, to get some more coverage in there. So we'll be applying for that and we'll keep you apprised of the process and that will help.
Thank you, Mr. Licouris. And thank you, Ron. Any other comments, Vice Mayor?
Ron, you said that the, the, uh, fire overtime, that expense was in relation to three positions being terminated?
Leaving, not, not, not firing, so.
Leaving. They left it on their own accord.
Resigned.
They resigned. Okay. They retired.
Yes, they retired.
So potentially, you could say that, you know, maybe they resigned from the City of Tarpon Springs but went another place, right? So potential, is that, is that what happened?
Uh, I think for three of them, but the others, other three or four went into the drop program.
They retired?
Yes.
Okay, good. I was gonna say, I, that's, I was hoping that that wasn't an example where we trained somebody, trained somebody, trained somebody, and then we lose them to another city. Because in essence, that, that two nineteen becomes a lot more.
Yeah.
So I'm happy to hear that that wasn't the case. Um, the tree bank for seventy-two hundred, what's the deal with that?
We have a separate, you know, we got the separate reserve for the tree bank money. They spent more money on the trees through, through the, I think the company Morelli's. So we just needed to supply some more money for them. I think it was like seventy-two hundred dollars there.
Right.
And like I say, it comes out of the separate tree bank reserve money that we have.
It just, as you know, we give you a number that we think we're gonna use and we're seventy-two up, but it's still that, that money that we get.
We still have plenty of money in the tree bank. This is just a transfer.
Yeah, this is just a transfer. We've got, we've got plenty. We've got plenty.
Right.
I'm planting trees wherever I can plant them. So yes, there, that is a healthy fund still. But we just, we anticipated what we had budgeted for, we went over that. But the money is there.
I'm good.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, I, I just, I think this is one example how we do need to, um, uh, fund more, more, more positions in the Fire Department. And I'm, I'm very glad to hear that, that we're looking into multiple positions for that grant. I thought, I thought maybe just one or two. So the most we can get, that would, that would, that, that would be, um, a great. Because I think the, the overtime, I know, I know there's, there's a balance where the overtime is worth it as opposed to hiring somebody. But with the addition of the third station, our, our, our growing, um, populace, I, I, I think it's time to have a serious look at our, at our public safety, making sure that it's staffed at, at, at appropriate levels. Thank you.
Commissioner Slattery? No comment. Any public comments on this item? Hear none. I need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Yes.
Merrill Huzis.
Yes. We're now going to the item number ten, which is Resolution 2016 dash thirty-nine.
Resolution twenty sixteen dash thirty-nine, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year 2016 seventeen.
Ron?
Uh, budget resolution 2016 thirty-nine is the first budget resolution for the new year, fiscal year 2017. And it's one we do every year about this time. But what it's mostly bringing over is balances from the previous 2016 that have not, they were budgeted for, but they have not been spent. So like the first one, four point six million, that's encumbrances or purchase orders out there. They haven't been expensed. But this brings over tho, that budget for those encumbrances into the new year. The same with donations. And a lot of, a lot of the item, items, items on here are stuff that was not spent in 2016. And we're bringing the budget over into 2017.
Thank you. Any commission comment? Question? Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Ron, as an example for the public, just because, not to insult intelligence, but, you know, one could, one could take that encumbrance carryover and say, oh, were we over budgeted by five million bucks? But an example would be like a slated project in that fiscal year that for one reason or another got delayed. For example, the Ring Avenue Parking Lot Project, whatever. And then it gets carried over into the next fiscal year. Some of that money comes from that, you know, four million and change.
That is a high number. And three million of that is one point five million is for the reconstruction of this building that's still ongoing.
Right.
And the other one point five million is the fire station.
But again, it's for projects that were slated for that year, for whatever reason, didn't get it, didn't get completed.
Exactly. A lot of them are water and sewer projects too, capital projects.
Right. Thank you.
Any comments? Public comments? There is none. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Yes.
Merrill Huzis.
Yes. Well, that concludes the regularization meeting and is adjourned at eight oh five P M. And we are now going to the CRA meeting. I now call to order the Community Redevelopment Agency Meeting of the Seat of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, at eight oh five. Roll call, please.
Chair Huzis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tarepani?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seabrook's absent and excused. Commissioner Slattery?
Here.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes. A, March first, two thousand sixteen. B, July fifth, two thousand sixteen. C, September seventh, two thousand sixteen. And D is September twentieth, two thousand sixteen. Um, Mr. City Attorney, in regards to the, uh, A, March first, two thousand sixteen. Uh, Commissioner Slattery and I, we were not in office at that time. Would you vote for that?
Yeah, you can vote.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Hear none. Any, uh, commission comments? Yes.
Um, I would just, not depending on the spot, but why are we approving minutes from over six months ago? It would seem that we were trying to approve those sooner, right?
That has to do with the C, because they're CRA minutes, they have to be approved at a CRA meeting. And the last two minutes, or last two meetings we had, uh, the March one got missed on the July meeting. And then on the September seventh and twentieth were budget meetings.
I knew there was a reasonable explanation.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yeah. Are there any, uh, public comments on this item? Hear none. The Chair wanted to entertain a motion?
Approved.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Yes.
Merrill Huzis.
Yes. Item number two is Resolution CRA two thousand sixteen zero four, CRA Budget Resolution.
CRA Resolution twenty sixteen dash zero four, Resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year 2016 seventeen.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Hear none. Any commission comments? I will entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther? Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Yes.
Chair Huzis.
Yes. Did I call for, uh, public comments? I thought I did. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Well, that concludes the agenda tonight. We go to the staff comments. Police Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just want to let you know that on November twenty-third, our honor guard has been selected by the Tampa Bay Lightning to be the color guard during the National Anthem. So that's big. They look really good and we've come a long way and we continue to improve the unit. I don't know if, I know the people there, but their new uniforms, uh, were presented at the Veterans Day event and, uh, they do really well. So they do a really good job representing us and I'm definitely proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Uh, briefly, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to introduce to the board and staff a new attorney from my office. He's sitting in the audience today. His name is Patrick Perez. Uh, Patrick's been with the firm since May of this year. He graduated, uh, law school at Florida State. We hired him anyway. And, uh, kidding. Uh, he studied for the bar with us and, uh, passed it in September and was sworn in. And, uh, he is going to be assisting, uh, as all of our attorneys do in the representation of the city and our other municipal clients. And so you may see him either sitting here with you or at one of the other board meetings or in, or in a meeting. So, uh, he's been a great addition to our, to our staff and I wanted you to, uh, put a face with a name.
Thank you. Mr. Licouris?
I was trying to figure out all meeting, what he was in the audience for.
Me too.
I know you were.
I let you slide with it all day too.
Um, as I said earlier, um, the news about Sunset Beach, obviously, it was a bucket list item that I didn't know if I was completing in time. Again, it was four and a half or five years, very shortly, that we've been trying to get that. And the fight that we've had, and that's, you know, we've talked a lot about dredging a lot. But again, two examples, you saw what I had, we're just trying to put a dock out, which is not even dredging how long it took us to get the one over there. And this project where we had to convince time after time again, um, this was a situation where boats were actually damaging the environment because of how low the channel was. And we wanted to, we wanted to dredge it so it wouldn't cause that damage. But the hoops that, you know, Gary Sherman and several of the staff went over and over, years after years, to get the finally, last week or whenever it was, to get that permit to get out there and, and dredge that. It was just, it was just a very long project. And I was beginning to wonder if I'd see it in my time as city manager. But again, that we'll be going out to bid and, and as soon as possible, we'll be getting that done to dredge there. As we dredge it, we'll also come back to you, look into some other improvements on Sunset Beach, a little clearer. Um, try to make some clearer changes for the boat trailers to do, to allow some of that stuff. So we are waiting to do that for the dredge. So we'll also be coming back with some other things to try to improve for the boaters there. But finally, to get the depth of that, um, where they'll get us to, it was, it was a good accomplishment to get. And we'll be getting on that as fast as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Licouris. City, Madam City Clerk?
I do. Um, for our upcoming March election in 2017, uh, the qualifying will start this November twenty-second through November thirtieth. And I wanted to remind everyone that on November twenty-first, second and third, the Clerk's office, as well as the whole city hall, will be across the street at our Public Works area. And then we'll be closed on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of the holidays. And then we'll be back in the office on the twenty-eighth for qualifying. Um, and I also wanted, in the next couple of days, we'll be, um, distributing out the dates for our third Citizens Academy. And, um, I can tell you, we have not announced the date yet, and we already have a full class. We have not advertised. And we got, we've already exceeded our, um, capacity.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Uh, thank you. Um, a couple of things. Uh, Mr. City Manager, the emails that we've seen about the, um, communication with the resident and the Army Corps regarding the Wickham Bayou project. As you know, that's something that I'm very sensitive to. Um, and I know that, and I'm not asking you for an update tonight, but I know that you said that it was gonna be some communication with staff and the Army Corps in response to that email.
Yes.
Um, so probably not our December fifth meeting because I think that we're gonna be, you know, discussing other things of, you know, pertinent value. Uh, but I'd like to know what's going on with that. Um, prior to that email from the concerned citizen, you and I have had conversations about that. So I mean, I do feel like there is, uh, a need to try and rectify that a little bit. So I just want to know what's going on.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, we started, uh, the mayor mentioned something about tennis courts earlier and it kind of jogged my memory a little bit. The, uh, the, the practice wall at Craig Park, at a minimum, it needs a new, uh, needs a new paint job. Um, but, uh, we used to have murals all over town, right, that were, that were awesome and people enjoyed. And they displayed all kinds of, you know, historic value and things like that. And the Public Art Committee, you know, now has funding for more public art than they evidently can come up with to do. So it would be a recommendation of mine for them to look at that, that practice wall as a mural spot. Um, you know, it's frustrating to me to impose, I, you know, I support public art, but it's frustrating to me to impose regulations and, and add a development cost to, you know, new development for the Public Art Committee to, you know, create public art around town and have money sitting in a bank and not do anything with it. So I'm, I'm frustrated by that. So now that they have money in the account, I'd like to see some public art around town. And I think that wall is a good spot. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Slattery?
Oh, thank you. And, you know, I want to just say something about the public art as well. I know we've been hearing about the bike racks. Um, I still haven't seen anything. And you're, you're correct, they do have money in their account. And, you know, public art is very important to any community. So I would love to start seeing some public art around town if we, uh, we can talk to them. Thank you. Um, uh, I lost my train of thought. I'm sorry. I do want to wish everybody a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Uh, we won't be back sitting up here till I think the beginning of December. So, um, enjoy your Turkey Day. And I did attend a really, really awesome function this weekend. It was, um, fundraiser for, uh, Kathleen Monahan, Dr. Monahan's Foundation. It was the mermaid masquerade. It was unbelievable. Uh, I'll tell you, we have some great staff that works for this, for the city. And they, they did a great job putting this fundraiser together. So I, I thoroughly enjoyed it. And the mayor was with, was there as well. And it was, it was, it was a great time. And, um, our special photographer was there as well. So thank you for, thank you for being there. I appreciate it. But it was a great time. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Several things. First off, that, uh, practice wall, if you will, which I probably couldn't hit if I tried. I'm that bad at tennis. Um, I think that's a great idea for public art. It's, it's a blank canvas. I mean, it doesn't get, uh, you know, uh, easier than that. Second, uh, we have to add an extra spot to the academy. That's Citizens Academy for Joan to come back and take pictures. Because she's, she's our photographer. That's free, of course, right? So, um, third mark, as I mentioned to you, um, be, be for the meeting, you, you don't, you don't have to answer now. But as far as the intersection of Saffron and Tarpon Avenue, if there's, if there's any way we can accomplish the safety goal without having what I think are those unsightly signs out there and, and causing basically a four-way stop, that's not a four-way stop. Um, some al, some alternative would, would, would work great. I know we've had some instances of people get, get it, getting, getting hit. Obviously, safety is before aesthetics, but there has to be a balance. And there's gonna be more accidents, people stopping. I mean, even myself, I just, you see, stop and you stop. So I mean, is, if I'm doing it, I know many, many, many others are. So if you can come back with us maybe at the next meeting or sometime with something, that we can do that, meets that safety goal we're trying to get, but just looks a lot better than like those god awful signs.
Okay, will do.
Thank you. I got several things. Uh, Friday, November eighteen, we have the Holiday Prodis giveaway from, uh, nine thirty to eleven A M. at the Citizens Academy for Progress, which is located on the four, four hundred and one East, um, Marlothic King. And it's sponsored by Central Advala and Representative Chris Bros and Farm Share. I think it's a very good program for people to go. Uh, Saturday, November nineteenth, the Tarpon Springs Sister City Program has a fundraiser. And I'm sure you have that on your desk.
Yep.
Uh, this fundraiser, uh, it's from eleven to four P M. at the Craig Park. We call it the, uh, the Sponges Glenday. Well, that event actually has two different purposes. One is to exhibit our culture and our heritage. And the second is to raise funds for scholarships. So this is a good cause. Uh, we're gonna have, uh, the Call of Fila Dolmades Competition, which is the Great Please. Also, they're going to prepare Caburma, which is the, uh, the sponges, the way they were preparing me to go out sponging. So I think it's gonna be educational. At the same time, it's gonna be a good cause that we can raise some funds for scholarships. So I invite all of you to come. I think it's, you're all gonna have a good time. There's gonna be music there. Uh, very, very economical. It's only twelve dollars. Uh, and the reason is so economical so everybody can afford to come. I think it's gonna be great. We also have, um, on, uh, November twenty-sixth, we got the Wine, Wine Walk from our four P M. to nine P M. on Tarpon Avenue. November twenty-sixth and November twenty-seven, we got the Thanksgiving Arts and Crafts Show. It starts from ten A M. to five P M. on Tarpon Avenue again. Friday, December second, we have the Pinellas County Delegation Meeting, and it's right here in the city hall from nine A M. to twelve, uh, to twelve P M. Friday, December second, we have the Popular Snow Place from five P M. to, uh, ten P M. It's on Tarpon Avenue. Thanks, Mr. Licouris, for doing that again. It's, it's a great event. Same day, Friday, twenty, uh, Friday, uh, September second, we have the, uh, uh, Eliminated Boat Parade. It starts at eight thirty P M. on the Spring Bayou. At the Spring Bayou, I think this is a, an excellent event. Uh, you see all the boats with the lights on. I think it's, it's great. So I invite everybody to come. I think it's gonna be, especially for the kids that love that. And, uh, I'd like to wish everyone to have a, um, very happy and blessed Thanksgiving. Well, that concludes our CRA meeting and it's adjourned at eight twenty P M. Good night, everybody. Thank you for being here.
We got, we got the third closed. Just waiting for, for now. They gotta help us get the stuff to hand float. But yeah, we got the third closed.
Thank you.
Long, long journey done. I'm sure. Happy about that.